All right, we're gonna come back from recess six fifty-five. All right, next on the agenda, discussion on the superintendent hiring process. So, our policy two four one four that we talked about before, the one thing that the board wasn't certain about, which is a consultant. So, the first thing the board has to decide is, do we want to move, have a consultant assist with the search? So, I mean, that basically could just be a yea or nay. Start doing this. So, so that could be a yea or nay. Eric, your thoughts?
For the cost of a consultant, are we talking, do we have a ballpark on that?
Ten to fifteen thousand.
For ten to fifteen, and with a consultant, the board still maintains its authority to make the decision.
So, the board will still, we still have to, we'll still establish a search committee. But what happens is that the consultant basically works with the chair of the search committee. You know, so if they're gonna do focus groups or anything like this, they'll work with the chair to make sure that, you know, the groups include groups that the board decides they want to. And that was something else I was gonna kinda get from the board is, you know, 'cause based on our policy, you know, we want to get a, you know, a vice and council of a broad variety of groups within the district representative demographics. So, what groups do we want to pull from to be part of the search committee? So, they would do that and work with us and they kind of contact everybody, find the most qualified people based on that and, and work with the search committee and then weed them down to bring the final people to the full board. And then it takes two-thirds of the board to appoint a new superintendent.
Thank you. For ten to fifteen thousand dollars, we hope that we're gonna get, and we will ultimately offer this new superintendent a three-year contract worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think that ten to fifteen thousand dollars is money well spent. How would you feel?
Brian?
I know I'm in the minority, but I would, as I said before, highly recommend to get a search.
All right, Laurel?
I tend to agree with the other argument that we had at the last board meeting where we were discussing this. And it doesn't seem like rocket science. We kinda know what we're looking for. We know where most of our issues are that we're looking for, things to address, et cetera. And I, I think that we're capable of that. I think the managing of the focus groups and the paperwork that may or may not be involved with that as well as, you know, like work, that's something that, to me, is a little bit of a concern. And having a consulting agency help us with that might be helpful, but I'm not sure it's necessary. So, I'm on the fence about it. I'm, I'm not married to hiring a consultant. I don't think we have the money for it. And I think we can do it ourselves, but it's just probably gonna need more work.
All right, I'll come to you last, Patty. I'll circle around. Terry?
I, I would go with Laurel said, in this climate right now, cost, we have to be cost-conscious of every single penny. And I'm not saying it's not money well spent. What I am saying is, given the climate and our student needs, if it's something that we can accomplish on our own, it's probably gonna be more work. But I, I would tend to fall on the side of not hiring a consultant and putting that money towards the students.
Kara?
I think with the current budget stuff, we should not. We just saw, we got for intern applications. I don't think it would get much different from full-time applications. I think you can plug through them and pick a couple out to interview and I think we can, I think we can do it ourselves.
Jim?
Given the political environment we're in right now and the reality is that the best we can hope for, we've already had, what, seventy-five thousand dollars cut from the budget. We're looking at another two hundred thousand on top of that, and that's our best hope. I think in a, in a normal setting, I think Eric's right, it's well worth the money. But I don't think this is a normal setting.
Bless you.
I think we're, we are begging to have them throw the boat down if we, if they find out that we're spending ten or fifteen. And by the way, I think that's low. I think it'll end up coming higher. And I'm not saying you're misleading or anything.
No, these are numbers that pretty much I got from what the costs are from Cave and two other places. So, I got like three different prices, just to see what they would be around.
But I just think we're begging for trouble if we do that, and I'm against it.
Patty?
I'm against spending any money, number one, that we don't have. And even going to the Board of Finance and asking for money for a special appropriation for this. And the reason being is because I'm looking at capital and there's, there's projects that, that are gonna be in trouble there too. We just don't have the money. I understand some concerns, but I don't, I don't feel like this is major rocket science, especially for the people that have been through this two and three times here in town, hiring a superintendent. First, that the, the focus groups, I just kind of put in my own kind of mind, there's probably one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight focus groups. And the board attends those focus groups as well. So, you know, and it's, it's pretty much, where do you see the district going? What do you want in a superintendent? And then it gets capsulated and it's brought back to the board. And so, someone to, to kind of work on that, if we have a good chair that's able to do that or a member of our search committee, which is the most important thing, I think that those can be done pretty easily. The job description for a superintendent is gonna be the job description, and we're not gonna change that. That's pretty generic. The contract for the superintendent is gonna be the contract. That's gonna be done by P and N anyway. And I think that there's this fallacy that the, these consultants have a pool of people that they can go and, and pull from. I think that the word is out on the street already. We know that because we, you know, have had some inquiries and stuff. And we also have to face the, the fact of, we don't have the money and we're a small district. And we need to do this work ourselves.
All right, so it seems that the board doesn't want to move with the consultant. So, we're gonna establish a search committee. And I'm gonna appoint Mr. Perry only because he has been involved in two superintendent searches. One with a consultant and one actually without a consultant. So, I think the first one was without the consultant, Ikebelly. And, and then the current superintendent was with the consultant. So, so what I'd like to, what I'd like to get is what kind of, you know, from the community, you know, what kind of group? So, Brian, what, what do you, and I'm gonna go around, so, 'cause we wanna try to get as much input from the community and transparency as we can and making sure we get somebody who, who, you know, will be accepted. 'Cause ultimately, they, at the end, they still come to the full board for interviews and, and everything else. Not that the board can't go to focus groups and talk to them outside of the search committee. So, Brian, what, what groups would you?
Usually groups will, when you do a search, you're gonna include students, probably two from the high school, two from the middle school, if not more, a part of this search committee. Then you have your parents. Then you have the community members. You have your teachers, a teacher or teachers at the elementary, middle school, high school. You also have at least two staff members, which are not certs. You have your admin, elementary, high school, middle school, at least one from there. And then you also reach out to the programs that serve, like each school, a district, like the DTL, Impact. I don't know if the high school has connections.
No, and Impact right now doesn't have a board.
They don't have a board.
They don't even have a board right now.
You know, the, you know, there's certain, you know, in the community section, there's, there's certain stakeholders you might get. There's this, people, seniors, Ray Board, you know, things like, you know, alumni, that, that, and that's, that's a community, that's why the member was TBD. And that's how you, you have that search committee. And as you all know, from there, they, you know, have to recommend however many candidates the board wants to see. Then the board takes it from there and does their own diligence, interview, multiple interview, whatever they do. I, I, you know, if you're looking for a timeline, I'll have everything, could have everything Friday. The goal is to wrap up the search committee for full board recommendation by November sixth. The new board, I don't know if that's your vision, the new board coming in.
See, so mine would be a little beyond that, so that the new board has a chance to come in and that they at least get one or two shots to.
At the forms or whatever.
Well, to see, see the candidates, right? Because they're the ones who are gonna have to, you know, three, there's gonna be three changes. So, they're gonna have to also work with the new superintendent. So, I think it's only fair to give them an opportunity.
So, are you planning on dissolving the search committee? 'Cause you're not running again, right? So, November sixth, what happens?
So, it, really, I mean, for the next couple of months, it's process, it's more of process and setting up. And only because he's done it on both, he's probably the most, has the most knowledge on.
I would just say he's most qualified.
So, what do you think, Patty, for, yeah, I'm gonna go around everybody for groups if you didn't hear it. So, what, what group would you like to see for?
Can you please make sure that you reach out to the alumni? And get somebody from the alumni on there. And I think it is critical that you get somebody from the Ray Board on there, because Ray Board gives us so much.
Purple Fund?
The Purple Fund also gives us quite a bit. There is some crossover there. So, just kinda reach out to those. And then, Brian, I'd be happy to give you like a list of just some of the focus groups. 'Cause I think that, like, one focus group should be like the town officials, which is Board of Finance and the business manager, the selectman, the IT secretary, you know, treasurer, public works. 'Cause all of those have to work.
Yeah, just send, everybody can just send, you know, the recommendations of what.
But that would be, that would be my recommendation. I just hope.
And the, the committee, the way I look at this committee, it's gonna be a working committee. This is not just sitting here.
Right.
Oh, yeah, just come to the meeting. They will actually be monitoring, facilitating everywhere, the focus groups. They'll be bringing up back information to the search committee and for the full board to see what comes out of this. So, there is work. This is not gonna be, oh, yeah, I wanna be out of it just to get it. No, there's gonna be work.
And every board member has opportunity to attend any focus group, talk to people. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's, you know, you wanna be on the other side looking, because if you're, if, since we're the, basically the jury, right, who appoints, you don't wanna be the prosecutor who's involved in every step, because then you kinda don't see it from this, you see it too close.
I have a process question. Brian, probably you can answer this for me. With the open government stuff and, you know, you gotta have public meetings and everything, does that mean that the search committee has to meet in public and work in public all the time? Or are they allowed to avoid that because it's like executive?
It's, it's in the executive session. We're actually, yeah, it's personnel. So, no, I, I would have, I'll go through, 'cause a lot of them don't know about the ramifications of that. Whatever said here. The focus groups are not in executive session.
Obviously.
Right.
What, what, what the public wants to give input. And that, and that's important, that the board wants to show, obviously, transparency, especially going into the next elections and stuff like that. Hey, we, we want your input. So, here's your time to give it to us. There'll be many days. It's gonna be busy. Again, the, these, those that, you know, are beyond the committee are gonna be working. This is not a, gonna show up. There's actual working aside, people are doing. But my job is really just to facilitate and get the process moving. It's, it's gonna be, there'll be a community and then the board. The next board's gonna be.
My only concern is, again, you're leaving in November and then we're gonna have to have a new chair on there. So, are you putting other board members on the search committee as well? Or what are you doing with that? I mean, that's a problem. Let's just talk about that right now.
You know, we could do one.
You know?
I, I think there has to be.
Well, there'll be a transition. I mean, I'm not gonna go.
Well, obviously, but I think there needs to be one or two board members on that committee.
And the search committee, right.
Some institutional merit.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so you gotta kind of figure that out, 'cause you can't have a search committee all of a sudden working and everything. And then November, oh, you got a new chair and I'm out of here and.
I would just say, I mean, it shouldn't be, one, one more should kind of be, because the more you put on there, then you're basically having board members almost like they're influencing. You know, if it becomes a board is the search committee, it's like, we don't really care what the community says, 'cause we're the ones who are gonna say what we're gonna do. When they all come back to us anyways.
Be careful.
No, having one other one on there to transition.
That's, that's gonna be there after November. That's, that's a major concern. And I think that people are gonna be not very happy if they're seeing even our board's transitioning, the search committee's transitioning and it just.
Spinning our wheels.
Right.
You told you of experts.
Is it feasible to have a board member who does not vote or speak, but attends the meeting like an adjunct or something, just to?
No, if you're on the committee, you're on the committee.
No.
No, you mean on the vote on the backend?
No, no, no. I mean, can, you know, what you said about having only one or other person on the committee makes perfect sense to me. But I still have this, a sense that it would be useful to have a, a couple of board members or more than one who's still on the board afterwards to kind of report back. So, I'm wondering if there could be, I, I don't know what the actual term would be. I know these things are done where, you know, you're a non-voting, non-speaking, observing member of the committee.
So, are you saying this is in addition to?
No, so I, I know what Jim's saying. Jim is saying, if, we'll say, used to we're on the board, I mean, on this search committee, during the thing, you're really, you're not gonna ask any questions. You're kinda gonna take everything in. So, it's information that you can share when Brian leaves. But during that process, you're not gonna really interject. You're not gonna interject.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna come across as intimidating, 'cause you are board members, to, I like this person.
No, I think you'd have to be observant.
No, so I mean, I, so I understand what you're saying. I think that's a fair point, that you're there.
And I'm not saying.
Observe and then kind of.
No, in case we're more than one. We have a chair and we have a second set of years.
No.
That's, that's kind of, is that what you mean, Jim?
No, because the, the chair's gonna be gone. And so, I'm wondering if, and it may be a stupid idea. I'm not, I'm not trying to push something. But I'm wondering if it would be feasible, for example, Brian's running the committee, that's fine. Terry's participating and you're observing.
Oh, I see. So, you are talking three board members.
Right, but there were. But only one of them would be actively participating in anything.
See, but my goal is for that second member not really to be, you know, the, the chair, whoever is, that person, because that person ultimately is gonna be on the backend, one of those people who, you know, votes to appoint the next superintendent. So, to be there, to be able to take the information and share it when the transition happens.
I, I could be that person. I'll have constant communication.
But you're gonna be off the board.
No, he's talking about.
That's where my concern is.
Like start now.
Well, no, so. Yes.
So, the search committee does not have to be chaired by a board member?
It does.
Yes, it does.
It does.
It does?
Yes.
By policy. Yeah, no, it has to, it has to. Now, he can stay on the search committee as, as somebody who's not a board member. But there are board member would need to then.
I, I think the public is gonna go, I, I think the public's gonna have some issues.
Okay, well.
That's, that's the only thing. So, just be careful. If you have a strong search committee, then you're all set.
Twice.
Yeah, right.
Been on sixteen years.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll find. If there's another board member who's interested, just let me know.
Yeah.
And, and then we'll make sure that that one other board member is, is also on the search committee. But understands that they're really the transition person when it comes. Now, not to say you can't, you know, help, you know, in the, the process.
And, and you're all qualified to be that second person. I would probably, which may make sense, those on P and N would probably be an ideal, because you're gonna have to do it with a contract too.
That's a good point.
I, I agree.
And two, two of the, four, two of the three will still be here.
There's a carrier in the world, so.
Yeah.
Then if you two don't want it, then someone else is gonna have to.
So, I just.
I agree. That makes perfect sense.
I wanna just understand. We have a chair on the committee who's leaving in November. That piece of it I completely understand. We have a second board member, P and N, who does make the most sense. Being the secondary facilitator next to the chair and probably ultimately the person who's going to take over in November.
That is correct.
Also conveying information. So, why do we need a third person?
We're not gonna do a third. We're just gonna do the two.
That's the only piece. And I'm not trying to argue your point, Jim. I just really wanna understand.
It might be a dumb idea. I'm, I'm not pushing.
I don't understand. I think it's extra.
Nope. Yeah, go ahead.
You guys can have to decide.
So, we got three, three vacancies, right, coming up with the board?
Yes.
I'm kinda looking at all this right now. Are there three Republican candidates?
I, I, you know.
Republican and three other rats.
So, there's six people out in the community, who might want to be on this in order to bolster their candidacy or whatever their motivation is.
Well, we're not, we're, we're, we're not gonna take anybody who's running for any office in town. We don't want any, no political, that's a great point. No political connection. No, you can't be, that's a great point. No, we wouldn't, we're not gonna let them use this as, you know, a platform. Right, but I mean, perception, perception. So, Laurel, what, what, from, you heard from some of the groups, Brian and Patty said, is there any groups that you have right now you could think of? If not, you could always, you know, that you would like to see represented.
Yeah. No, I don't have anything particular now. I wanna give it some more thought. I mean, I think it's the standard people that we wanna make sure touch base with everybody.
Nope.
I just had a question on clarifications.
Um, go ahead. I'll go to you then, Terry. That's fine.
For the, getting back to the program serving the community, we talked about the alumni and Ray Board. Does that include other civic groups that serve the community as well?
You can pick whoever you wanna pick for.
Yeah, if there's a civic group that you could think of that wasn't named, that's the whole thing, is to see if there's something that you may think of that Jim doesn't or I don't think of and Kara does, so we can make sure we're really inclusive and get everybody involved. So, there's a total buy-in on whoever, you know, the next people are brought to us to.
I mean, I probably wouldn't do the political.
Yeah, none of that.
No. I know that there's a, like a special education, a parent support group and, you know, there's a number of different civic groups, smaller ones that might want to be interested in doing the focus, being part of that.
Well, okay.
Do, is put a kind of like a contact form sheet, you know, so we have that. Plus, there's two questions or whatever.
So, I, I'd like to think that we would send something on Parents Square and then try to get it, that's on our, our webpage too, where if you're interested, you know, name and where you live, make sure you live in town, right? And the newspaper, well, I mean, you know, how long have you lived in town? Do you have any kids in the school system? 'Cause I think that's important too. I mean, you know. So, we wanna make sure that we don't just get everybody who doesn't have any kids and nobody who has them. 'Cause you talked about the, the, right? We wanna make sure that we kinda have, have people from, who don't have kids and who have kids.
I want people that have some, right, some serious qualifications is the problem.
How about, why do you want to be on the search committee? And what do you think you can bring to help us find the next superintendent?
Exactly.
I mean, 'cause those, those, four questions, but basically, I mean, don't, I wanna be on it just 'cause I wanna pick the next superintendent. That's really, you know, uh, give us a reason.
Brian can handle all that.
Right, but I mean, that's, but that posting, I mean, to put those questions out.
Yeah.
So that we're getting the right people.
And then, Brian, you said something about some sort of a signup sheet. So, we would have this on like, whatever, wow, I'm sounding like I'm eighty years old here. But I mean, we'd have it digitally, digitally available, so that we can just fill it in.
A, a fillable questionnaire for it?
Yeah, we could, you could do it on some, because there's an app or something we can use and do it.
You can use it.
Like a monkey, whatever they call it.
Survey Monkey. You can just do a Google survey.
I, I think I've decided. Laurel, you're the other person on the search committee.
Why?
Because you, you just right on top of it. I like that. And you're on P and N. Kara, you're too busy. You run for office. I can't put you on.
Thank you. I have a community member.
See?
There's, there's several alumni I know who are very interested.
One that's gonna be very, very good.
That could be two.
I definitely think that.
But we.
Mr. Carey with no them, so.
And so, we just have to try, if we went with that one, we'd have to just make sure we, if we're, we take one from one party, we take one from the other party.
Yeah, actually, you know, I almost think that we should not deliberately seek them out.
No, no, they have to.
Let everybody know.
They have to know.
If somebody wants to get in, they'll get in.
All right, so Terry, you said civic groups. Did you have anything else?
No, I think I, you know, as far as, I'm assuming we're looking at breakdowns of students and parents, that we're making sure that all the different educational groups are represented, so.
Right.
That's just the assumption.
I, I do, and I agree with you. I do worry a little bit about parents and only because there was a problem several years ago when we were hiring one of the superintendents, where parents decided that they were gonna tell their groups what was going on in the search committee and leaked out information that they should not have leaked out. So, just be careful about who you hit on there.
Right. And I, I think that, that kinda will come from you guys, when you ask the questions, superintendent. You're gonna hit the hard-hitting curriculum questions, whatever.
People are between the sessions?
Don't know yet, but it'll be a lot.
There's focus groups and then there's the search committee.
Yeah.
So, those are separate. So, you got a lot in a focus group and not in a search.
Yeah, yeah. Those, focus groups are totally separate. But then you'll have your search committee. 'Cause your search committee, again, they're gonna do, people will be assigned, you handle the focus groups. You handle the communication that goes out and, and keeping, you know, where we, where we are with the, like the notifications that go out. So, yeah, it, it's, everybody's gonna be busy.
That's really good.
Are we including a summary or like some short blurb on the application sheet? You know, people sign up for this thing on what the commitment will look like?
Yeah, I haven't put it together. So, but there will be, here's your kind of charge to being on this committee. Your commitment, your involvement, what we're gonna focus on.
Privacy.
Yeah, and then the privacy, but and that will also be reiterated. Through you out there. So, and it's gonna start quickly, so. Well, we haven't yet posted, which will go quickly to, hey, we're now ready. We're gonna be looking for, set up our search committee first. In, in, in concert with, I had time to set that up. By the time applicants get here, it'll be, it could be a month. We're not waiting to build our search committee after we get the applicant. We're.
So, what we're gonna do is, when, when all this comes out, when this interim one closes, probably after the holiday, we'll put the posting out for the full-time superintendent position and give, give like a three-week window for people, so we have enough time to get, you know, anybody who's looking for that job and maybe do a three-week window. And then, at least the search committee, as they're getting formed and setting up how they're gonna do their focus groups, they'll have this list of candidates now they can start working from. So that we're not waiting till they're all set up and then we're, 'cause then we're just, we're going backwards.
Exactly. And I think the goal is to try and move the whole process along as much as possible, you know, possible, cause you.
Cause you really need a permanent, like.
You gotta try to get them as soon as you can, right?
Exactly.
You gotta get acclimated. You have your foundation. You gotta get your curriculum.
Kara, do you have any groups in particular?
Well, I, I thought maybe former board members.
Oh, that's a good one.
Anybody else? But I was, like I was telling her, if you do all that, you have to make sure you take one from each party. You can't take one party only, right? I mean, cause that's.
Well, I think that holds true no matter what you're doing, if you start talking about parents, because
No, no.
You got Republican parents, you have Democratic parents.
But here's the thing, when.
You cannot make this Republican.
You, 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 you.
You just can't do that.
But if you're asked, you're not asking a parent, what party are you in? If you take somebody who was elected, you know what party they're in. That, that's the separation.
But they were elected, right?
But I understand they were, but you understand that they, they represented, you know, and I'm trying to keep politics out of it, is what I'm trying to do. So if you put in as a parent and you never ran for office, I'm not asking you what you are. I'm just saying, why? Um, cause you can see, I can just foresee, if I take you and, you know, you're R or D, and then you, you like this one, well, you know, then it's gonna be, well, that's cause an R or D said it, not just somebody who's interested in the system. And I just don't want any of that involved in this. And Eric, cause Eric, to Eric's point, you know, if you're running for office, I mean. Alright, uh, Jim, any groups?
No, I may come up with some idea and email you and Brian, but right now, it, it seems kinda self-evident and it's covered.
Alright, Eric? So I mean, I, I think, you know, we have a plan, so, uh, Brian's gonna get that started. And after the holiday, um, we'll put a posting out for the full-time superintendent position. And, and as the focus, as the search committee gets together and has its dates, Brian will email and let everybody know. So we'll all kinda know the timeline, and then we can kinda plan accordingly. Alright, that sounds good. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.